It is nine o'clock according to our new tablets. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with a special request for your guidance. Today, your council will elect a new mayor and vice mayor. We ask that you guide those voting in the election process for the ways of clear thinking and adherence to a purpose above themselves. And as we approach the celebration of Veterans Day, we ask that you make us mindful of the sacrifices made by our servicemen and women and their families in the service of our country. We ask also that you keep those present on active duty in a war some underway by loving care, protecting them and returning them safely to the bosom of their family. Finally, we ask that you open our eyes to all beauty of your works and that by rejoicing in your whole creations, we may learn to serve you with gladness. All these things we say, amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all city council members and city officials are present. And the first item of business is the council reorganization.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Florida and that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council? Okay? And we have individual ones for you to sign here.
Congratulations. And next, we have election of mayor.
I will open the floor for nominations for the office of mayor.
I'd like to nominate Rachel Kiesling. Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Vice Mayor Freeland.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have two candidates running for the office of mayor.
Do this by show of hands?
All right. Those in favor of Rachel Kiesling for mayor, please show by sign of hand. Those opposed?
You have to do opposed too?
No. I saw two in favor.
Show hands for Carolyn.
Those in favor of Karen Freeland for mayor, raise your hand, please. Carolyn Freeland is the mayor by a vote of three to two.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now, we just switch chairs?
Switching?
Do we do that now or do we vote for Vice Mayor?
Karen, is there a need to do that now? I think we can do that next time.
I think that Carolyn needs to chair the...
Yeah, I know. She can do it from her spot, though.
Carolyn will chair the meeting now and she will take nominations for Vice Mayor.
Understood, but just for convenience.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will take the gavel and present you with the gavel.
Thank you. Well, thank you and thank you, Rachel, for all of your service and I know we'll continue to have all of us support one another, so really appreciate that. All right, then we are now the election for Vice Mayor. Are there nominations for Vice Mayor?
I nominate Kim Devine.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Then by acclamation?
If we could get a motion to close the nominations?
Motion to close the nominations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I guess by acclamation, Kim Devine is Vice Mayor. Congratulations.
I'm sorry. If we could get a... Go ahead and get a motion to appoint Councilmember Devine as the Vice Mayor by acclamation, please.
I move to appoint Kim Devine as Vice Mayor by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just make a formal thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Aren't we all pleased? Aren't we all pleased? And now we take over again. Oh, my goodness. All right, the first thing that we have then on our agenda is proclamations. And the first proclamation is that I will be reading. It's proclamation, city of Punta Gorda, Florida.
Excuse me, Rachel, do you have the proclamation in front of you?
It's in here, yes, here.
Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned, now therefore the City Council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim November 2014 as National American Indian Heritage Month and urges citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities. Passed and duly adopted this fifth day of November, city of Punta Gorda, Florida. Carolyn Freeland, Mayor. Thank you. Okay. And accepting is going to be Lynn Tyson from the Charlotte Bay chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
On behalf of the Charlotte Bay chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we once again wish to thank the city council, mayor, the staff for their efforts and energies in promoting this very important activity. Again, thank you so very much.
And now we have the opportunity to have the introduction of any members that are running for board or committee appointments. If you would like to say a few words.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hamilton. I'm a candidate for representative on the Marine Advisory Committee. I just wanted to say a couple of words. I've been living here 15 years, survived Charlie like most of us in here. I'm a full-time resident. I have been a representative on the Marine Advisory Committee for three separate turns in two different organizations. I've actually had the opportunity to vote and to speak for probably a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of funding for Punta Gorda for various projects that we've had over the years. I am a current member of the Manatee Management Protection Committee for this county. Spent probably about 1,000 hours on the waters of Charlotte Harbor over the past 15 years, avid fisherman and kayaker, and I think I could be a very effective representative on the Marine Advisory Committee for you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak to a committee that you are nominated for? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to... Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Gary Guncher. I have applied for the opening of the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Administration Committee. Previously, I had served on this committee from 2006 to 2009. I found it very rewarding and a great learning experience. I would like to bring that experience back to the committee. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so, there anyone else that is nominated for committee that would like to introduce themselves? All right, hearing none, I believe we adjourn this meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. Good morning. Good morning. Congratulations. All right, we will call the CRA meeting to order. The first order of business will be any citizens' comments on any of the agenda items. This includes the minutes, our invoices, the CRA project status report, our proposed lease with Morgan Stanley Smith Barney Financing for space in Herald Court Center, and also then the proposed Lashley Park Municipal Marina Capital Improvement Projects. Are there any citizens' comments? All right, then, hearing none, we'll move forward and we have the approval of minutes.
Move approval.
Second. The minutes have been... Motion has been made to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion. The minutes are approved. The second is we have the invoice of Icard, Merrill, Cullis, Tim, Furin, and Ginsburg for services rendered to the CRA.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried. CRA's project status report. Mr. Kunit.
We have a technical difficulty.
Turn it on for it to work.
Oh, details.
Would you like to go to the lease discussion while we wait?
All right, so you can take a little time, sure. All right, we have a proposed lease between the CRA and Morgan Stanley Smith Barney Financing for space in Herald Court Center. Who will be speaking to that?
We have a brief technical delay. I know, we're gonna use the Elmo just for a moment. The real issue that we want to bring to your attention is how much latitude staff has with respect to modifying the standard lease that the CRA approved. And I'll kind of give you a brief overview of why that's an issue. I've noticed in the... In your packet, you may have only received the version of the lease as it would be required or requested by Morgan Stanley. When leases are developed, there are leases that are more landlord-friendly, there are leases that are more tenant-friendly. Our lease is more... Our standard lease is more landlord-friendly. There's no harm in the asking for changes, particularly changes that might be unique to that particular operation. I'll give you an example of a provision that would be unique perhaps to the particular operation. If you might just disregard my handwritten notations, I'm just gonna focus in with respect to the use. The blue underlined language is the language that has been asked by Morgan Stanley to be included in our standard form lease, and the red crossouts are the language that already exists. As you can see, Morgan Stanley has asked us for modifications that reflect their unique requirements that involve securities and financial products and limitations, I guess, with respect to those types of products. We typically wouldn't have any problem with that, but suggest that maybe those unique things could put into an addendum to our standard form contract. I'll give you an example of another condition which I think is more problematic, and this is in paragraph 15 of our standard form lease. Again, the blue is what the Morgan Stanley is requesting be added to the lease, the red is what they're asking be deleted. And through negotiations, if you look at the bottom of the page, this is, as I said, this is sort of just a representative example of what I'm talking about, but tenants often want to have the opportunity to modify the interior, let's say, of their... Of the leased space by making some alterations, either for aesthetic reasons or functional reasons. And our lease says, okay, you may do that with our consent, and at the end of your lease term, we have the option of allowing you to leave that stuff there if we think it might be beneficial, or if we otherwise don't want you to leave it there would require the tenant to remove the additional improvements at the tenant's own expense. I mean, hypothetically speaking, let's say you've got a tenant that's gonna have some sort of sporting goods retail store, and to facilitate their products, they create a fake mountain on the side of a wall for aesthetic purposes, but, you know, it's built in there. And let's say that, you know, they come to us and we recognize ahead of time that it's going to be a major expense to remove that, we would want to make sure that the expense and the burden of that expense would be on the tenant. Well, in a potential negotiation, you know, we could decide whether or not we want to modify the lease. Here, Morgan Stanley has suggested that the cost of removal be borne by us of any improvement they make, which might be acceptable, but then in order to have control over what the expense might be that we're gonna assume, we would want to have the opportunity to provide written approval ahead of time for that expense. Well, in the draft that Morgan Stanley's presented, they have included a paragraph, I've highlighted in yellow, it's the top of the paragraph, that that consent shall not be unreasonably withheld or delayed. And that's language that a tenant would put in so they have the opportunity to fight over whether or not the landlord's request was reasonable or not. So, the contract as we have it written would say, okay, we have the right to approve it, but if you're gonna put it in there and we don't want it, you need to remove it at your own expense. So, this is the type of thing that we would then have to be able to negotiate with your authority and as to what provision should be allowed and what provision should not be allowed and how we would make that work. So, again, the two options are have Morgan Stanley use our standard form lease with an addendum that's unique to their particular operations, or give us the authority to negotiate all these various terms and I can assure you that the lease is replete with numerous changes that they've recommended. More of them are to make it more favorable to them, and some provisions, I quite frankly don't even understand why they've deleted our language, so it would require a fair amount of discussion with them. And so, that's the two options that you basically have presented and we're looking for direction. Ultimately, the lease would need to be approved by you, and ultimately, there may be some provisions, a matter of policy, that staff might recommend that you may overrule. So, but when we would identify what those policy changes were. And there are some provisions that they've recommended, changes that are more stylistic, which we would... Which we already know would probably be an improvement on the form of our standard form lease. So, that's why this item is before you today.
Yes. Kim?
Really, it's pretty standard for a financial institution to have a different lease. I have a different lease with the Bank of America than I have with everyone else. The real question is, we don't want to lose the lease. Would they accept our standard lease with an addendum?
Well, we have not discussed that with them.
I mean, I think that would be the ideal if they would, in my opinion, but if they wouldn't, I mean, I don't want to lose their lease. I mean, they're a long-term...
Nancy?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Having worked in a major corporation for a long time and been a part of contract negotiations from the big guy standpoint, it's pretty much, we want you to do it our way, and, you know, that's the way it was done. So, we may not have as much bargaining power. I think my objective would be to see us get the space leased, and if what it takes is for us to modify our lease and actually go through it line by line, because that's what we would do, is go through contracts line by line by line, and that's just kind of standard operating procedure. So, I agree with Kim on the first, but if not, let's just get it done.
Rachel?
I guess, you know, when you're saying there'll be a financial burden onto the city for some of these changes, those are the ones that I would like to specifically know about, like the example that you gave and maybe some other ones. If the city's gonna have to incur costs when these people leave, we need to know that going into it.
Anything else, Jane?
Yes. I'm concerned whether is there any time constraints on this?
We waited a long time to get the lease. We waited months to get the lease.
Three years.
Three years to get the lease, and now they want to be in tomorrow.
That's what I saw.
So, take...
I do feel that we can go ahead and trust our lawyer to represent our point of view, and I do agree with him. I do think that that's the way to go, if it's possible, but I'd hate to lose them.
Tom, did you have a comment?
Yeah, sure. These large national firms typically have their own terms and conditions, and it's a question of who's in a better position, the landlord or the tenant, and, you know, a tenant of the caliber of Morgan Stanley, I think we certainly need to sit down and work things out with.
Okay, so I think we have the marching orders then that we would like for you to continue with them and negotiate.
Yeah, what I take that to mean is I'm gonna ask them first if they have any objection to using our standard form lease with the specific addendum. That way, we know exactly what they're doing, and if they do not want to do it that way, we will negotiate term by term.
Okay.
And I understand where you're standing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We don't need a motion.
I don't think we need a motion. I think we have consensus to move forward.
Yeah, we're okay.
We're okay. Okay, we'll move on then to the...
Slide show.
Slide show. Is this the Howard Kunit show?
Yes.
How did I get back there?
We now are up to 15 liverboards as of a few days ago. We still have 15? Still 15. Every month, that'll probably change a little. And 18 bookings in October for the community room, and the Clearhead still doing a bunch of pump-outs. Veterans Park, 100% of the granite funds have been collected, so now they're raising money for the other parts of the project. Community Park, our bids should be back November 25th. And Harbor Walk West, design agreement is on today's agenda so we can get Wiler Engineering moving so they can prepare those documents now that we got approval from FDOT to move forward and get all the documents in place so that we can eventually bid it out that's grant-funded. The design, we're paying for, but the... We've got $1.9 million in grant funds waiting.
And that's for which year are we looking at now?
Well, the grant funds are available 2016-17. However, now that the sales tax passed, we will be discussing with FDOT whether or not we can front the money, if we even want to. But first, we gotta have the discussion with FDOT whether that possibility is available for us to start the project a little early, knowing we will be paid back. We don't even know if we can do that. If we can, we'll then come back to you to see if you even want to do it.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Howard, is there any possibility of shifting the grant funding from this portion of the project to a different portion of the project, which could theoretically eliminate the requirement for these specific types of drawings that FDOT is requesting from us?
I don't think so.
Because of the sales tax?
Hey. We don't... We took us...
Took a long time.
Our recommendation is we stay the course. It took us a heck of a long time to get the grant funds moved up for this. We haven't had that discussion.
Okay.
I mean, can we... Are we still gonna stay the course, or do you want to...
I think we stay the course.
I think we stay the course.
Stay the course.
I mean, you have worked hard to try to work with FDOT now with regards to the funding for this, so I think we need to accept their funding and see whether or not we can move forward ahead of time. That would be great.
Is there a possibility that the remaining phases might be completed now before the FDOT? No.
No. Not really. Unfortunately, that's the end of our project.
Any questions or comments for Howard? I just want to mention about the pump-out boat. Tom called, or my husband called to check on the schedule, and they had already left the Ponce area, but they said, let us know when you're there because we're gonna be heading back, and made it very convenient that he just met them, got the pump out, very easy, and so it's working, and it's working very nicely. So, thanks to all who were involved in that. The next thing we have then is the proposed... We did the proposed lease, we have the status report. Now, we're gonna be looking at the proposed Lashley Park Municipal Marina Capital Improvement Projects.
A few months ago, we came to you with some projects that Marina Park Management manages the Marina for us, and staff met and discussed whether there are some improvements we need to do at the Marina area. The first two are ongoing, repairing the water leak and putting in the new window treatment to stop the leaks, and then finishing the interior walls. The material is on order, and hopefully that'll get done soon. It hasn't been leaking lately, has it?
It hasn't rained, has it?
Okay, let me continue on. We talked about repurposing the restroom building by the fishing pier. We went out, procurement went out, got their own quotes to do the work, and you have that in front of you, we feel that needs to get done. And you have that in front of you, we feel that needs to get done as well. They can have it for storage for the golf cart and other... Yes?
Yeah, I have a comment on that, Howard. There is an alternate for the overhead door. I, I think that we, we might want to consider that. That'll make it so much easier to get the golf carts in and out. They can, you know, just press the button when they're in the golf course, and if there's weather, they can just, you know, drive it in there, and it'll, it'll be a lot easier to...
Did this cost here, did that include the overhead door?
Yes.
Oh, it did? Okay.
That's, that's $13,014 includes everything. And the roof. The whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So, let me skip number four, because I'll get back to that. Number five, we do feel that the Marina building is going to need to be painted. It's fading. And once we get all the water leak completed, we'd like to get that job done. The installation of the railing around the building, that's more of a liability issue. Again, that's the, it's a railing, just as you walk out the door, on the side where the bait was, and then on the side of the community room, there's that steep slope. And we want to put a railing there to protect, you know, somebody's going to slip. On number four, you have a landscape improvement plan, and there were some changes as of yesterday, right? As of yesterday.
We're discussing.
Would you like to explain it? We'll have somebody explain the, the changes.
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. We met with Bruce Lashley yesterday and Rusty, and we are going to continue to meet. There are just some changes. Everybody's on board with definitely improving that area. It's just a matter of what species will be planted there. So, next Wednesday, we're going to meet out there and discuss the changes, whether it's a shady lady that goes in, or some other plant. Those are, that's what we're discussing, so...
Yep, there was an issue of watering. Who was going to assume responsibility of watering? Has that been resolved?
We've already resolved that, and I believe we will not need the maintenance agreement, because it's going to be handled by the Lashley Park crew.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Very good. So, we're not addressing this issue at this time? Do we look at the same kind of cost, or the same budget?
Yes, yes.
Same budget?
Within, you know, some dollars. We, because we'll have to go out for bid with the change of the plans.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move forward.
We will move forward with the improvements.
All right, we are now at citizens' comments on the CRA projects. Hearing none. Begin with commissioner comments. Nancy?
No, no comments today. It's a great day, and I'm really happy to see the sales tax pass, so we can proceed on with our, our plans with our city.
Absolutely. Nothing.
It is a great day. I want to thank the ex-mayor for her services, and congratulate the new mayor.
Thank you.
And maybe sympathy, too. Good luck.
I was going to say, I'm...
Thank you.
None, nothing?
Well, I definitely want to congratulate you, new mayor, and vice mayor. And I definitely want to thank you for being such a good mayor.
Thanks.
Appreciate you.
I have none, thank you.
And I don't have anything either, except to say thank you, Pontegoro, thank you Charlotte County for passing the 1% sales tax. We can move on now with a number of projects, so this is just great. Just great. All right, we will now have, go into our other agenda, and we will...
Citizens' comments.
We had, we asked for citizens' comments. All right, we will be adjourning then the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, all of a sudden, it's gotten really cold.
Hey, Karen.
Karen, can you just check the temperature?
Oh, cold.
Call to order, the November 5th, 2014 City Council meeting to order. And first, we will, we have no public hearings, we have no quasi-judicial public hearings. We do have ordinances, but at this time, we will accept citizens' comments on our ordinances and resolution items only. Okay, I am playing with my new machine, excuse me. All right, we have, the first one is our ZA 0714.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontegoro, Florida, amending the Pontegoro Code, Chapter 26, known as the Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Architectural Provisions, Section 7.4, Building Principles, by adding new subsections 7A and B, to provide for compatible or complementary architectural finishes for exterior fixtures and furnishings, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
This is not a public hearing, other questions or comments?
Move approval of ZA 07-14.
Just a comment, if I could. Last time we discussed this, I had some issues with the grade of stainless that we talked about, or which might be used. I've since had some conversations with staff, and I'm comfortable that whatever stainless is going to be utilized, it'll be kept up and maintained. And if it's not, staff will act appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second.
We have a motion then, and a second, to approve ZA 0714. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on.
Next is ZA-08-14, again, a second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontegoro, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Pontegoro Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, Article 11, Sign Standards, Section 11.3, Permitted Signs, Subsection 11.3R, Portable Signs, expanding the permissible locations of portable signs and providing additional limitations on the use and location of portable signs. Adding a new subsection 9, providing for review under the provisions of Creative Signs, amending Section 11.11 Creative Signs, Subsection 11.11B, adding portable signs as permitted for review under the provisions and criteria for Creative Signs, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Comments, questions?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion to, and a second, to approve ZA 0814. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Finally, is ZA-09-14, the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontegoro, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Pontegoro Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 8, Standards of General Applicability, Section 8.5, Fences, Walls, and Hedges, Subsection 8.5A5, removing the hedge height limitation in side yards. Amending Article 12, Landscape Standards, Section 12.15, Native and Approved Non-Native Trees and Palms, Subsection 12.15D3, removing the prohibition for arica palms in side yards, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Again, this is a second reading. Are there any comments or questions?
Move approval of ZA-09-14.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ZA 0914. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now moving into consent agenda, and we have citizen comments on consent agenda items only. And they're quite extensive. We have the minutes, we have our legal department's invoices, we have the amendment for Harbor Walk West, for the design upgrade, which Howard was referring to earlier by Wyler Engineering. We have a number of resolutions from CHINEP, the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program. And from our utilities department, we have a resolution to approve the relocation of a non-exclusive grant of easement related to our RO plant. Comments?
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Commenting on, on the consent agenda, I had the opportunity the other day to explain the CHNEP expenditures to some people who thought that the city had gone into some unusual areas. Is there a possibility that CHNEP authorizations could be signified with some designation, like a star, or an asterisk, or something like that? So people understand that it's not coming out of the general fund, that it's not some new adventure that the city has undertaken, that it is an authorized expenditure of the NEP?
Yeah, I was going, I was going to...
State your name for the record.
Oh, Don McCormick, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I ask Howard if we, to that, to that Mr. McCormick's comment, I ask Howard if we could please, on our agenda, on each one of those, do something to designate what these were, that these were not city funds, these were, just so that it was clear to our residents that this is not an obligation of the city. And I think, Howard, you said that you were going to do that in the future.
Yeah, we can have some standard language. I mean, it is city funds, but it, it's not coming out of the general fund, per se. They're all grant funded, and in-kind support from CHINEP, there are no additional general fund dollars associated with it. We'll come up with a standard language.
Okay, that would be helpful, and I think even as we look at the resolutions, to identify them right up front, excuse me, that they are from CHINEP, would be helpful. Any other comments?
I, yeah, do we do, is there any designation, like if it's an enterprise fund on other agenda items? Because it's sort of similar. It's like a pass-through fund, it's not really an enterprise fund, but do we delineate that on other?
Under funding source, if it's like a water and sewer...
It says utility funds.
It say utilities?
Mm-hmm.
But we'll, we'll add something for CHINEP.
Okay.
Little emblem, like a little dolphin or something.
A small tooth saw.
Yeah, a small saw tooth. Yeah, exactly.
Well, that would be helpful. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our regular agenda.
We need approval.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Was there any items that anyone wanted to pull?
Nope, no.
Nope.
Move approval of cassette agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me. All right, the consent agenda is approved. It's catching. Move into our regular agenda, and we have citizens' comments on our regular agenda. Unfinished business regarding seawall maintenance, the utilization of vacant lots, around lighting of trees and lamp posts, any new business that we're going to be addressing with regards to banners, real estate signs, fence heights, and sealed solicitation.
Good morning, John Jalafou, for the record. First, thank you for allowing me to keep my position on the code enforcement board. Hopefully, some issues are behind me, and I can move forward. Secondly, I'm here to speak on behalf, I am in favor of the, the fence ordinance amendment, which is going to be under new business, Item C. I currently live in a neighborhood residential overlay district, and I had brought this to Terry Tubbs. It really involves anyone that, that lives on a corner lot within the downtown area, that the way the, a corner lot is set up, that we have, zoning looks at it as we have two side yards and two front yards, because we're fronting on two streets. And so the ordinance, as it reads, that if you, your home faces one of those streets, then really you do have a backyard, but the ordinance, zoning ordinance says you don't. So you have to hold a six-foot fence off your property, property line, five feet. Downtown, our lots are so small, that we want to utilize every square foot, even sometime inches, of your rear yard. So that's why this is brought up. Again, I am in favor of it, and I, and I thank Terry for getting it on the agenda, and hopefully you guys will vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi there, good morning. My name is Christine Shepherd, and I'm also in favor of the amendments to the fence ordinance. I am building a home on a corner lot downtown, and we chose to buy a lot downtown so that we could have ample space in our backyard for our children and our family pets. And we chose to have a six-foot fence, and if we build it under the current ordinance, we're losing a five-foot strip along the back of our property, so I support the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on regular agenda items? Okay.
One more.
I'm not being... Thank you.
These are my new neighbors.
Sorry, it takes me a second to get up.
All of our new neighbors.
Hi, I'm Karen Star Brady, and I live on Dern Street, and congratulations to our new mayor.
Thank you.
Must be excited. I also support the new ordinance for the fence. I live on a corner property, and it is rather difficult when owning a corner parcel to be able to make the maximum of one's property, so we support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will now move forward. Enter unfinished business, we have utilization of vacant undeveloped lots for seawall maintenance.
Good morning, for the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works. Several months ago, the City Council had asked that both Burnt's for Isles Canal Advisory and Pontegoro Isles Canal Advisory Committees review the utilization of vacant lots for seawall maintenance. So they've been discussing this over the last several months. They have provided letters to the City Council, which is in your agenda packet. Mr. Brewster and Mr. McBride are here to address the City Council and summarize their, their letters and their findings. So at this time, I ask the gentlemen to please come up and discuss your committee reports, please.
Good morning, I'm, excuse me, good morning, I'm Dave McBride, currently Chairman of the Pontegoro Isles Canal Advisory Committee. As Rick said, we've discussed this off and on for a number of months. You have a copy of the memo, I won't bore you with the extensive overview of those details, but kind of in summary, within Pontegoro Isles, the number of vacant lots that can be used for staging our canal maintenance activities is reducing, is diminishing, and will continue to diminish in the, in the near future. Current estimates, using some general assumptions, would suggest that we probably still have something in the, in the neighborhood of 10 years before they're really gone, per se. However, in some parts of the Isles today, based on the, the way the building is progressing, there is, there are already shortages of areas to stage. The most direct impact of, of this is really the time it takes to move material from a staging area to a job site. And as time goes on, that will, that will increase. We've looked at the possibility of city-owned properties to be staging areas. At this point in time, that does not look viable, really for a number of reasons. Probably the, the biggest technical reason is that when you, in order to keep our transit times approximately what they are today, although they, it would, still would be longer, we would need 12 different staging areas throughout the Isles. And when you look at what's available today, there's really not 12 optimally placed areas that you would have a chance to purchase to, to even do that. So, the impact is, is going to be increased costs over time due to these increased transit times. In addition, we will ultimately have some issues as to where we can load and unload wall panels and, and store dirt and, and things like that. We're looking at, and staff will continue to look at, some of the city rights away areas... areas as possible locations for that. All of those would involve some expenditure to make them, to make them truly viable. So, I guess that's, that's it in a nutshell, and certainly available for any questions.
Shall we hear from BSI, and then we can open it up for discussion?
Hi, for the record, I'm Gary Brewster, Chairman of the BSI Canal Advisory Committee. We went through the same process, and, but with a little bit different conclusion, I'll explain why. Initially, we considered four different options. And it mentioned here, use of a large-reach crane, for example, literally go over the houses. Using new or different facade materials that would be lightweight and easy to install. Those were pretty much initially ruled out for some pretty obvious reasons, overhead wiring being the main problem with the crane. Then, the other two options we looked at were ownership of property within the neighborhood, or let the costs fall where they are, which means we would take the material, stage the materials wherever, and possibly have to use the entirety of Alligator Creek with multiple barge strips coming in and out. Contractor's estimate for that would be four or five times our current cost, if you had to do something like that. Then we discovered another problem. We own one lot in BSI, the one directly across what we commonly call the lock, our entrance into the neighborhood. We said we can use that lot for loading the crane on. The problem is that that crane, sitting on the large barge, cannot get into our neighborhood. Even though we have current plans to increase the opening from 17 to 21 feet, that's not near enough to get the large crane in. So it has to be loaded, once the barges are in the neighborhood, has to be loaded onto the barges, the crane does, from the land. We could, we thought, do that from our one lot that we own. As it turns out, there's a problem that's insurmountable, though. That large crane, loaded on this large barge, which is made up of multiple barges brought in and bolted together, it's the only way they can do it, cannot get to the far extremes of our neighborhood, either the northeast end or the southeast end, because of some very sharp turns. We have like a 40-degree, I mean, 40-foot canal width, and 90-degree turn, and that barge cannot make it. Our conclusion is that the only way to logically continue to do the seawalls on those extremes is that we own property. Probably, in addition to the one we have, which is central, a couple of more lots, and use those as staging. Yes, transit times would go up, costs would go up, but not the five times we were talking about earlier. And basically, have to have a way to get there.
Gary, how is the crane getting there now?
It is loaded on the barge after the barges are assembled, from the land.
From a specific property.
From some vacant, no, from anywhere, from some vacant lot. As those lots go away, we will eventually, as was mentioned, maybe 10 years, get down to one lot, and that's the one we own.
Okay, all right.
And now, one more comment, though. We believe very strongly that certain additional items need to be addressed if we go this route, and that is, it must be made, the landscaping must camouflage, to the degree possible, the fact that these lots will be utilized for regular staging areas. Secondly, watching the process now, to replace the seawall, the old seawall is put on a vacant lot by the crane. New panels are brought in on the lot, put in place, the dirt's back and forth, and eventually, those panels are picked up and put into a dumpster, a larger container, and eventually taken away. That needs to be streamlined, directly into a container, immediately moved out. Those are the kind of things that has to be done if we're going to utilize these lots on a permanent basis.
Yes, Rick?
Can we start?
Yes.
Okay. The neighbors of the lot that we currently own in BSI, how do they feel about this staging area? Do you hear complaints? Do they, because that's my main concern, is that if we buy these lots, the adjacent neighbors and the people even across the canal are directly affected by the activity.
Absolutely. Haven't, at this point, had a lot of feedback, because this is a brand-new concept, and we don't, at this point in time, a recommendation. Certainly, the neighbors adjacent to the lots will not be happy with it. That's why we emphasize landscaping has to really be done, the design and implementation and upkeep of the landscaping, so we essentially camouflage it. Probably, we should also, where possible, utilize lots that are mangrove-facing, so...
And I was just thinking about the noise and the activity as well, because every day, they're going to be affected by the work that's going to be going on there. So that's my main concern. I mean, it's an option, I don't think it's a great, great option.
It's kind of the last option, but unless someone can find a crane that can get into the extremes of those canals, being loaded someplace else, there is no other option.
Right. Thank you, Gary. Yes, comments?
First, I'd like to express thanks to both of the committees for the work that they put into this, along with staff. You've spent considerable time on it, and I appreciate the work that you've done. To do nothing is to accept the fact that our costs are really going to escalate over the next, as you say, eight to nine, seven to eight years or so. That's based on the current rate of development, which is probably 100 houses per year. Going back to 2006, 2005, 2006, we had between 200 and 300 houses being developed during that time period, so we really don't know how quickly this development is going to take place and reduce the availability of those lots to us. So the option, in my opinion, to do nothing is not viable. We certainly need to do something. We've got to find a way to protect the canal, the people who live on the canals, to keep these costs as low as we possibly can, whether it's by searching out strategic locations in each of the canal areas, finding a way to store, we've got to possibly, we've got to look outside the box a little bit to really stay with this and find a solution. I know that some ideas have been talked about, using different types of reinforcement for the seawalls. That may need to be talked about some more. I know the cost for using a helical, and Gary, maybe you can help, a helical-type anchor to reinforce the current seawalls, maybe it's close to the cost of replacing a wall, but as the expenses go on, that cost is going to get, look better to use helical anchors, and there are places where they could be used, maybe on the seawall where a new dock has not been built yet. That wall could be reinforced before a dock was built on it. There are things, I think, that we need to continue to explore, to look at, and stay with this issue.
Other comments? I guess, okay.
I'm just wondering if, are we working on a budget of what is really the most...